Calling your meeting, order.
Welcome to the City of Erie, Pennsylvania Public Induction Ceremony of the newly elected officials. Please stand for a moment of silence on the Pledge of Allegiance.
A moment of silence, please. And the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
The following candidates were elected in the November 7th, 2023 municipal election, City of Erie, Erie County. Kathleen Schoff, having received 10,634 votes, be duly elected to the office of the City Council for a term of four years for the City of Erie. That Ed Brzezinski, having received 9,687 votes, be duly elected to the office of City Council for a term of four years for the City of Erie. That Tyler Titus, having received 8,930 votes, be duly elected to the office of City Council for the term of four years for the City of Erie. That Ed Brzezinski, having received 11,539 votes, be duly elected to the office of City Council for a term of two years for the City of Erie. That Casimir J. Kiotowski, having received 12,770 votes, be duly elected to the office City Treasurer for a term of four years for the City of Erie. We will now conduct the oath of office. Mr. Brzezinski, we can start with you. Cheryl, do you want to come up? Mr. Brzezinski, I'm, I, you're going to be sworn in for the four-year term?
Yes.
So that will automatically make the two-year term available.
I would like to make a comment. First time we ever won an office, it was a little lady that came up here and swore me in. And that little lady was Stephanie Demichel. This young man is Steph's son. And I'm very proud to have him with me today. Aaron's mercy.
Raise your right hand. Put your other hand on the side.
It'll be that for me. I, Ed Brzezinski, do solemnly swear.
I, Ed Brzezinski, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
As City of Erie Council, City Council Member with fidelity.
As City Council Member for the City of Erie with fidelity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen Schoff? Kathy, you can raise your right hand.
You can be after me. I, Kathleen Schoff.
I, Kathleen Schoff.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
That I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As City Council Member.
As City Council Member.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Now it's Matt.
Also, I just wondered if my wife is watching live stream from India, so I forgot.
This is Honorable Allison Skorpien, swearing in Tyler Titus.
I, Tyler Titus.
I, Tyler Titus.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
As City Council Member for Erie, Pennsylvania.
As City Council Member for Erie, Pennsylvania.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Before I begin, just a few things. I swore Kaz in four years ago. And I think the only few things that have changed in Kaz's life is that he has a gray suit instead of his blue suit. And I did love to put it around for the playoffs. Other than that, same old Kaz. Thank you. All right. I.
I.
Kazmir J. Kiotowski.
Kazmir J. Kiotowski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
As City Treasurer.
As City Treasurer.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Tony, if you sign that, swearing in, then I need it back.
Roll call.
Do you want to do remarks?
Oh, you had that at number nine. Roll call is number six.
Roll call for the 2024 Members of Erie City Council: Ed Brzezinski, Jasmine Flores, Chuck Nelson, Kathleen Schoff, Tyler Titus, and Mo Troop. City Council adopts a resolution sponsored by Chuck Nelson and seconded by Jasmine Flores that Erie City Council adopts the rules of council for the year 2024. Ed Brzezinski, Jasmine Flores, Chuck Nelson, Kathleen Schoff, Tyler Titus, Mo Troop. We also have a resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brzezinski, seconded by Councilmember Troop, that Erie City Council receives and orders filed data from the Erie County, Pennsylvania Board of Elections. Councilmember Brzezinski, Jasmine Flores, Chuck Nelson, Kathleen Schoff, Tyler Titus, and Mo Troop. All the resolutions pass yeas, six nays, zero. Now we can go to remarks.
New council members, you got Mr. Brzezinski.
It's an honor to serve the people of the City of Erie. I thank them for that opportunity once more. I will continue to try to be the voice of the people. All you people out there that think you're not being heard, believe me, you will be if I hear from you. Concerns, legit or not, we'll take a look at them and we'll honestly go for them. I have never answered a phone call with somebody calling me and saying, "I need help," and asked them if they're a Democrat or Republican first. If they're a citizen in the City of Erie, then they're our family and they deserve everything that we can give them as far as that goes. That being said, I can say a whole lot of things. The bottom line is, I'm very proud to serve again and I welcome our new members and hopefully we'll have a good year. Thank you.
Ms. Schoff?
Thank you. Is this on?
Three lines.
Thank you. Thank you, Erie, Pennsylvania, for your support. I first want to thank God for blessing me with this opportunity. I am very excited to serve Erie, Pennsylvania. I want to thank my husband Larry because he knows all the time and the effort and the hours that I spend with people, whether they're a Republican or a Democrat or an independent, whether they're rich or poor. Larry knows my heart. And this was a difficult decision for me to run again because he didn't want me to run. But he understood my need to serve people. And I needed a break and I was off and I continued to serve people. But it matters to be at the table and to get that vote. That is the hard part, actually, the election. It's not easy. And it wasn't easy for me. And that's why I chose to be on both a two-year ballot and a four-year ballot because I wanted to be in, but I didn't know the best way to go about it. And some people said to me, "Just do the four-year. You're going to dilute your votes." And I could have done that, but I didn't listen. I did it my way. I made my own signs and I went to the Democratic headquarters and asked them if they could put it up for me. And I didn't get an automatic yes. I got, "We'll see. It has to be approved." My sign was not as big as most political signs because it had to fit in a quart freezer bag. Because I had made them myself, I didn't want them to be exposed to the rain and only last one day. It took a couple of days for it to get to be approved and said that it was there. But I drove by and I couldn't see it. And my friends drove by and they couldn't see it. And they said, "Are you sure it's there?" And I said, "They told me it was there. I believe when people say it's there." Well, here you couldn't see it as you were driving by State Street. You had to see it by walking up south because you couldn't see it from the front. You had to see it from an angle and it was in a corner. Okay, it's up there. I'm thankful. Let's move on. There were many people running against me and they were all great candidates. And I, I didn't really have the confidence to think that I could do it. But I felt I did it the right way by being me and I went to the different things that you have to go to that I could possibly go to. Cam had an interview process, which I did. But anyways, I just want to say thank you for my family first, my friends who know I won't be mug clubbing with you all the time. Thank you for your support and understanding. Basically, you elected a kindergarten teacher, a former one. I've been teaching for 40 years at St. James School. And you might say, "Well, you got all your votes from there." No, because that school serves Mill Creek, Waterford, Wattsburg, Lawrence Park, Wesleyville. It's the people who came out and voted. And some of them were the first time that they ever voted. And for some, it may be their last time that they voted, very sadly. We don't know. I also know that I got endorsed by the Police Department. My father was a police officer. So I know firsthand, growing up, what families have to endure. And I also know I was endorsed by the firefighters. And I know several firefighters who have been loyal, serving our community. So I thank the Erie FOP and I thank the firefighters for their endorsement. I also want to thank those people who just gave me the encouragement to continue on. And one of them was the person I'm having big shoes to fill, is Liz Allen. And I continue to use her as a sounding board. So thank you, everyone. I attest to you that I will do my best serving the community with my knowledge that I know how. Thank you.
Counselor Titus?
I did not write a speech, but I'll, I'll go for, for just a second. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the history that just happened by me taking this seat. I don't. There's no greater privilege than to serve as an elected, representing constituents in your community. There's no greater privilege. It's not lost on me. It's not lost on me. The work that has gone in to getting to me to this point and the work that I will need to do to make sure that I'm, I stay true to all of those who believed in me who cast their vote, even those who, who didn't cast their vote for me. I, I stand in, well, I'm sitting, I sit here and I represent you. I will do that with, with fidelity. I will do that with transparency and I will do that with consistency. I will lose sleep, I guarantee it. The stories stay up. There's not a, a single doorstep that I haven't knocked on that doesn't replay in my brain. There's not a family member or a person I have not connected with that doesn't also influence every decision that I make. So I'm grateful. I feel truly privileged to be sitting here. And to be sitting here as a queer person, not just a queer person, but as a queer person, I think speaks testament to where the city is going, the opportunity that we have paved and, and what we want as we move forward. All of that, I, I do want to say thank you to my family. Thank you to everyone on this council who has reached out to help mentor me. There's many, many years of experience and words of wisdom and I know that we have a lot. I know that we're not always going to like each other and that is okay as long as we are putting our best foot forward and we're representing with good faith the community members who have elected to put us here. So I thank you again for this opportunity. I look forward to, I'm sure, a lot of Pepto Bismol and antacids over the next four years. But let's do this together because our city deserves us. Our city deserves us. Thank you.
Anybody who knows me, if I can keep this brief, it'll be a miracle, but I will. I want to thank, first of all, the great people of the City of Erie. This will begin my 29th year and my ninth election. I thank them because without them, I would not have had the opportunity to do this wonderful adventure over the years, the many great people I've served and the many great people I've met and will continue to meet. One thing you should always remember, though, is that you are no bigger than the people that elected you and you should never forget where you came from. And always remember that they put you here and they can take you away. I'd like to, I'd like to thank, well, it was a little bittersweet today because for the first time in my career, I was without my mother here. She had been to every one of my elections. Unfortunately, my dad could never been, he died young. But she's in a better place with him now looking down on me. But it's to be the first election that she hasn't been here. But of course, I had my beautiful wife of many years who puts up with a lot of the, the other side of me, who keeps me calm. Without her and my family, my children and grandchildren, I would be a lesser person. So I want to thank her because she makes all this possible and keeps me calm. Finally, no elected official is better than the people that serve with him in his office. I have been blessed over the years with two very great deputies. And one was Lucy Braebender when I was Controller and the other one is Ed Williams. No treasurer could ever have a man like Ed. He's, he's made the office look great, kept it going. In my absence during COVID and other times when my wife was in the hospital, Ed made sure the office ran efficiently. And I want to thank no less Akiva, Tina, Tony, and Jenna for making the office a great place to work in and an office that I think we've done good things and great things for the City of Erie. So to my wife and to Ed, my deputy, my trusted deputy, thank you very much and thank you to the citizens once again for electing me. Thank you.
All right, that's it for the swearing in. If anyone was here just for that. We'll be moving on to the regular business of City Council for the meeting Wednesday, January 3rd, 2024. Approval of minutes.
Approval of the minutes from the December 20th, 2023 City Council meeting and bills for payment on January 5th, 2024 and January 12th, 2024. Councilmember Brzezinski, Schoff, Titus, Troop, Flores, Nelson. Okay. We have a resolution sponsored by Councilmember Nelson nominating Jasmine Flores as City Council President for 2024. Discussion?
Yeah, I can say something. They, I have a little problem with the inexperience and I also wonder how she's going to spend the time required of a presidency when she has repeatedly told us over the years that she's been with us that she has Wednesdays off, otherwise her schedule does not permit her to be here. I like Jasmine. I will not vote for her because of that. Everybody's talking about process, which we'll talk about later. This is not a process. We're supposed to nominate from the dais and go from there. But that being said, I'm done.
I can have a comment. I don't work on Thursday mornings anymore and my clients start at 10 on 11, I mean, well, 10 on Mondays and Fridays. So I actually have some morning hours to make it to the department head meeting and the agenda meeting on Wednesdays because Wednesdays are completely free. I show up to most of my committee reports and my committee meetings and I show up very active in the community. I'm trying to be very involved in what's going on, on the day-to-day. So I think that I'm pretty fit since I ran as Vice President and did pretty well when Chuck wasn't here.
Any other discussions?
Mr. President, I would just like to say I am, I am in support of this Jasmine Flores for president. I do believe that she has demonstrated quite the capacity to navigate a schedule as needed as a, as, as a young female who is working full-time. I think she represents a great part of, of our city. And so having, I don't think that should be held against her. I think that she has shown and demonstrated the capacity to show up where she is needed to represent the voices that she has been elected to do so. And I don't have any hesitation or believe that her, her employment would interfere in any capacity to her, for her to serve in this role.
I'll offer that, for anyone that's watching this, the agendas and minutes for the last City Council meetings dating back to 2007 are available online on the city website. If you go back to the January 6th, 2021 meeting, you can see that the agenda today reflects exactly the same as that meeting did as far as the order and process, which is the meeting that Ed Brzezinski was named City Council President for 2021. So we are following the exact same process of all previous years and it can be easily verified on the city website if you were to look at the first agenda of every year dating back.
May I comment as well?
Yeah.
Thank you. I was on council. So I have seen Jasmine mature through the years and she definitely has matured. And I have a lot of time on my hands. So I am able to assist her as Vice President in any capacity because I have only Mondays and Thursdays where I am full-time until 3:30. So I give my assistance and vote for Jasmine. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Jasmine and I ran, well, we all ran together, right? And I, I think you guys had already ran before.
Yep.
And I heard this about Jasmine, I heard that, she's this, blah, blah, blah. But since we've been on, though, I think what I've seen of her has been opposite of what I heard. She definitely cares about, she cares about people. And also, you know, everybody knew my uncle Larry Meredith. He told me, "You have two ears and one mouth." And that's, you know, that's biblical. And he said, you know, "Listen more than you talk." And I think Jasmine has done that too. I don't know if somebody advised her, but I've seen her do that. But that doesn't mean she hasn't done anything, though. So I, you know, I do support her. I think that any good president, leader, coach is surrounded by good people. So we're all here to help. We're not going to see her fail. I do support Jasmine as a president.
Thank you, Mom.
That, call for the vote.
Councilmembers Brzezinski, Flores, Schoff, Titus, Troop, Nelson.
Congratulations, President.
Shall I continue or not?
Yes.
We also have a resolution sponsored by Councilmember Flores nominating Kathleen Schoff as City Council Vice President for 2024. Any discussion?
I'll have a comment. I chose Kathy because in the past she has been Vice President. I feel as though she has been very involved in the last two years that she hasn't been active. She's been out in the community. I've bumped into her quite a bit. So for me to pick her as Vice President to fill in when I'm not able to make it was a executive decision. I think that we both fulfill the role of President and Vice President. So thank you for accepting.
Voting on the resolution?
Could I have a comment about Kathy? Mrs. President? Kathy, I'm glad to have you back on City Council. When I ran for office, you were very helpful. You called me. If I didn't, it was too long that I didn't call you. You called me and said, Mo, hey, how's it going? So you, you know, you can see that the city believes in you. You never left City Council because you came to every meeting we had and you went to the authority meeting. So I, I know you care about what's going on in the city. And congratulations to you.
Voting on the resolution? Councilmembers Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, and Flores. Resolution passes, yea six, nay zero. Continuing on with the meeting? Is there anyone here to speak on a repository sale? Anyone here to speak on a repository sale? Anyone here to speak on a repository sale? Okay, we will go into public comments. Please state your name clearly and you have five minutes.
My name is Freda Tepfer. I live in Erie, Pennsylvania. What? Oh, sure, if you want.
All right, if we could have everybody who would like to speak for citizens to be heard to, you know, organize on the, your left of the room and/or on the front row if you need to sit, just so we have a little bit of organization in the process. I know people who sign up are normally in the back on the list, but however, all the cameras are over there, that's why, yeah. Alrighty, and while all that gets organized, we can, thanks, Lori.
I believe that City Council should be formal, so.
Can you state your name?
Oh, yes, of course.
And the municipality you live in.
Okay, I live in the city of Erie. My name is Julie Minich, M-I-N-I-C-H. My address is 1027 West 37th Street.
Thank you.
And as I said, I believe in formality, especially in the government. So that's why normally I would have let Freda speak, but I feel that it's very important to follow protocol. I'm up here to speak about the appointment. And the reason I'm concerned is because of legality. According to the paper that they gave us, you are going to appoint Mel Witherspoon to the vacant seat that I see beside Chuck Nelson. I'm concerned about this for a lot of reasons, and I'm sure my colleagues behind me will speak about many of them. But I have one really important reason. Legality. That's why I'm concerned about appointing Mel Witherspoon to this position. Mel Willi, uh, excuse me. Mel Witherspoon has reached his term limit, it's public knowledge. And therefore, appointing him may be illegal. Now, I'm not a lawyer. I'm not sure of that. But it could be considered a stretch of pronium and political favors. All decisions of the City Council may be considered illegal. The budget, the funding of different offices such as firefighters, police, they would all be in question. And anyone can sue. And anyone can go to the state attorney general with a lawsuit. And then there's the public. Why would we trust council? Would other parts of the government trust council? How about the Satan? Would they trust a council that did not obey their own rules? And as far as, as far as the public, can we really take the chance that the city budget, the firefighter's budget, could be overturned? Because if it can, then what are you all doing up there? I also want to bring up another point, and this is probably the mildest point I have. You have city lawyers and do the city lawyers want to spend all their time defending the legality of City Council? And we as taxpayers, do we want to pay for that? I can only speak for myself. I don't know about anyone in this room. And I'm not saying anything about lawyers because God knows I love them. But do we really want city, the city lawyers to spend time debating whether you all who are elected officials have the right to pass the budget? If that is legal? I don't want my tax dollars to go to them. We pay you to uphold the law and represent the citizens of Erie. I heard many of you say you are, we can call out to you and you will listen to us. Well, I want you to listen to me. And I'm, and I hope you listen to them as well. This is only a resolution. It can be rejected. The reason term limits happen is that so new people can come in with new ideas. Do we really want to stifle the interest of people throwing their hats into the ring? Also, I was once, okay, my last sentence. Do we want democracy or lifetime appointments? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Greetings, Council. Susanna Faulkner, City of Erie. First of all, I want to congratulate my wonderful neighbor and friend, President Flores. You made history today and I'm so proud of you. And congratulations to Vice President Shaw. It's really empowering to see two women in those roles. I don't know if that's ever happened in the city of Erie. I'm not sure, but that's really incredible. Dr. Titus, it's wonderful to see you here. I am here today to essentially read my cover letter. It's what I used to apply for the open seat. Hopefully, this will go to a public process where we will have interviews, just like we did last year, and a public vote. I stand very much against the resolution. I have the utmost respect for Mr. Witherspoon. It is an honor to serve with you. But we do have to go through the formal process and I am very concerned about the drain of taxpayer dollars on a potential lawsuit. So here's my letter of interest for the open seat on City Council. Just 11 months ago, I stood in the same position with a mission to serve the city that raised me. You entrusted in my abilities to advocate and give a voice for Erie's youth, to bring critical experience and expertise in grant-making and public administration, and to fight for the quarter of the city who live in chronic poverty. And I did it. My track record shows that even in a short amount of time, I get the work done. I delivered a committee report every single time up here on council and I attended every possible meeting I could for all of my assignments. I successfully championed three pieces of legislation on issues such as human rights, affordable housing, and parking and towing, along with $65,000 in necessary budget cuts to reduce our city's mounting budget deficit. All members of council, and I'm happy to see all of us here today, from this last session should be proud of the work that we did. I cannot fathom stopping the momentum now. Our city needs us and business as usual will no longer cut it. Change is necessary because our community is yearning for progress. Our city has immense potential, yet we find ourselves stuck in these endless cycles of stagnation. It's time to break free from the grip of complacency and usher in a new era of growth and prosperity for Erie. Change is necessary because our residents deserve better. We've seen the struggles faced by fellow community members. Limited access to committed funds for housing repairs, rising homelessness, closing schools, and crumbling infrastructure. I stand by what I said 11 months ago, right here. I am still the candidate most suited for current council needs. I have expertise in social and economic policy. I work at two local nonprofits serving predominantly low-income families, and I put in the hard work needed to serve our city. Change is necessary because our city is filled with untapped talent. We have brilliant minds, innovators, and artists who are waiting to be unleashed. Instead, many of them are trapped in poverty, eager to move away or stuck in low-wage jobs. We must create an environment that nurtures and supports this vast pool of talent and grows our population to transform Erie into a cultural and economic hub. Change is necessary because our city can no longer afford to be left behind. We cannot watch as our neighboring cities flourish while we decline. It's time to be bold, to take risks, and to invest in our collective future. By embracing change, we position Erie as a vibrant and competitive city that truly serves all of its residents. I stand before you as the candidate who understands the urgency for change. I will fight tirelessly for the transformation this city desperately needs. Together, let us strive for progress. Let us embrace change. And let us create a brighter future for Erie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. First, I'd like to thank all of you for your public service. I have two issues I'd like to address. The first is the resolution. Thirteen applications from citizens willing to serve. To not open.
Please do not address council directly. Oh, your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Cindy Purvis, City of Erie. Thirteen applications from citizens willing to serve. To not open these applications and publicly interview them is disrespectful, not only to them, but to the citizens of our city. I have known and respected Mel Witherspoon for decades. But to put him back on council at this point is an affront to our youth who need to move up and take their place. And also, it's an affront to democracy. I am asking, Mel, I am asking you if you are nominated for this position to decline. The majority of you are around my age. It is part of our duty to bring up and support the next generations. I know you are worried they will step in some stuff, just like we did. But if they are willing to accept our help, they can avoid some of the piles. If not, they will learn valuable lessons, just like we did. So please do the right thing and choose someone who is not in our age bracket, yet has the qualifications us taxpayers need. The second issue. It is my understanding that we do not have any public restrooms open 24/7 in downtown Erie. This places the homeless, the least among us, in an awful situation. What does this say about us as citizens and more importantly, about our elected officials? I know most of you personally, and as I do, we profess to be Christians. We need to care for the least of us. Please add this issue to the agenda of your next meeting and every single agenda after that until this issue is resolved. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Freda Tepfer. I live in the city of Erie and my name might be down on the list because I chose to be a witness at the caucus and I thought that was important. So forgive me if it looks like I'm moving in on the list. You know, I've been called a lot of things in my day and I've had titles, but I got a new one today. I'm a lug nut. According to one of our council members, he, he refers to the people who might have commented to you folks over the weekend about the agenda as lug nuts and acted like, what an imposition to get all these calls and everything about our city council. I, I was a little horrified at the attitude. I was horrified at some of the things I heard. I, the idea that people made promises about who they would support. I'm only a handful of years younger than, than former council member Witherspoon. And I agree that there is wisdom with age and there's value to, to continuity. And there is value to the wisdom, knowledge, and receptivity of youth. I worked as an orientation and mobility specialist and the people who came behind me, they're able to deal with the technology issues in that field that I don't have, I don't have the bandwidth to bother with, frankly. And we do ourselves a great disservice to just say it's all about experience. And while I, I am forever grateful that, that there's no longer a power pole in the middle of Green Garden on the sidewalk between the 12th and the Bayfront Connector, I sent letter after letter after email to the liaison for streets and sidewalks who happens to have been Mr. Witherspoon and never received a reply. As you know, that has been one of my primary focuses is sidewalk safety and access. And thank goodness for Leanne Parmenter and Ms. Flores for your help in getting the sidewalk closure ordinance. And number four on the new business is the fee structure, which will support administration of inspections and permitting. And also, the way it's written serves as a motivation to limit the duration and to provide alternative sidewalk access. But what I'm saying is the, the reason everybody's saying we got to have this experience on our council doesn't fly with me. It doesn't fly with me. And, and the idea that 13 people, including Mr. Witherspoon, applied And, and the idea that 13 people, including Mr. Witherspoon, applied, it's shameful to not give those people a hearing and to open-mindedly give those people a hearing. And as a proud member of the Democratic County Committee, the County Executive Committee, as a judge of elections, I want to say that it bothered me when I had suggested that a person could have removed themselves from being on two places on the ballot when they were certain of election, and to give the 40 duly elected members of the City Committee of the Democratic Party, that person said, "I think council's better qualified than 40 members of the Democratic Party to choose a council member." The ci- residents would have had the right to vote on that, that selection. We were denied that because the person thought they were, I believe it was engineered all along. I'm also deeply, deeply insulted about the, the, Kathy, I love you. You know I love you. And there must be-
Please don't direct comment to council directly.
There must be a restroom in Perry Square before the end of your term or your tenure. And, and by God, we'll pay. The city should pay to have it maintained. That's not a problem. But the way I heard the Democratic Party insulted because somebody's tiny sign was hard to see from a car, it really offends me. It really offends me. Um, I, I, I really hope that you consider the right of the, the residents of Erie to, to, to have respect for the process of selecting a council member. And Mayor, you were on NPR Morning Edition this morning, so everybody should listen to him. Thank you.
Thank you, Freda.
I apologize to the line. My name is Howard Bibbs. I live at 2931 Chestnut Street. I apologize to the line, but the line got to the left when normally it's to the right. Now, everybody's talking about change, but some things got to stay the same.
I do apologize. Normally, we have it on the right of the room, but the cameras are there.
Then another thing. If, if, if that's gonna be a problem, then go by the sheet. When people come in, if they're gonna talk, there's a sheet back there. It says, "What are you gonna talk about?" They need to sign the sheet. Now, in terms of getting things in line, Freda, Freda talked about election. Now, I know in this year's last election, Mr. Ed-
Please don't direct comment directly.
I'm talking about-
Please don't direct comment directly at council, please, as a whole, not individually.
And, and, and at that time, there was, there was two, two things for him, okay? Now, he can't hold two jobs. Like someone just said, then that means it leaves something open. I know on that I signed my name. Now, if we're gonna go by some order, let's go by the order of election. I know I signed my name to, to sit up there, and that, that, that is retroactive before any resume, before anybody being just put over there and put over here. I got my name, my name is on that ballot. If nobody else put their name on that ballot, then there's only one name on that ballot: me. Now, if y'all talking about fairness. Now, let's talk about work. I've been around some of y'all working. There's a reason one person left, because nobody wanted to work. Now, let's talk about work. I work all the time and don't have to work. I don't have to work. I have grants sitting on my shelf. I write grants all the time. If I think of something, I start writing. People come up here and talk about what their qualifications are. What do you do? Forget your qualification. What do you do? I mean, come on, let's, let's, let's get everything in line here. I feel that if it comes for any qualifications up there, I'm more qualified than anybody sitting in this room, other than Mr. Witherspoon. For any job sitting up there, any job up on the fifth floor. I know I came here every meeting and, and discussed different problems. Did nobody react, nobody reacted to whatever I was talking about? There was no reaction. And then let me just say this. Someone got on the news and said, "Well, we can't just let a person come in." But I remember on the news, that same person brought a person in and said, "We had to rush to do this, and we did it out of order." It's on the news. You can go check it. Check the news. They keep records. And it's out of order. This, what I'm doing is out of order. But we put this person in. They put that person in because it was time for a vote. Now, yeah, it's time for new people this and new people that, but there got to be an order even with the new people. There's a time for young people. I came here and, and, and spilled my guts about women's being in this position and that position and whatever position. And I know the mayor remembered, because he was sitting here. I said, "We need the first person should be a lady over, over county, county executive." Four months later, we had a lady over there. I thought there should be a president up here. I thought the mayor should have been a female. And I openly voiced that. I have nothing against females. I have nothing against nobody if they're gonna do the work. I haven't seen nobody that I'm looking at did the work. I do more work at my house than y'all do down here at City Hall, and I be working for the city. Whatever I do is for the city. It's for the residents, not no constituent. It's for the residents of Erie. Some people just wanna talk for their constituents. I can't even spell constituents, but I can, I can spell residence. I can spell resonance. I can spell the residents of Erie. And we're talking about change. People wanna change it so it be their way. If they wanted their way, they should have been y'all way. And I know y'all don't know nothing about y'all way, but it should have been y'all way. So we need to get this shit crap straightened. But if, if Mr. Witherspoon ain't sitting there, Howard Bibbs is supposed to sit up there, because I am on the ballot. If nobody else signed on that ballot, my name is on that ballot. I should be sitting up there.
Hi. My name is Cole Shunley, and I live in the City of Erie. I'm speaking as a member of the Erie chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America and as a member of Erie County United. I'm here today to talk about the process by which city council will fill the two-year council seat. The resolution by Councilman Ed Brzezinski to reappoint former councilman Mel Witherspoon is a brazen attempt at consolidating power for the conservative wing of council. Council has used an open and transparent process in years past and even planned to do so this time around, only for this resolution to be put forward. I demand that council reject this resolution, use past processes to vote on a candidate, and for former Councilman Witherspoon to withdraw his name from consideration. Now, let's be clear. With or without this resolution, Mel was almost certainly going to be in the final running for the two-year appointment. Back in August, when I was first informed of the plan to reappoint Mel, with the mayor being the tie-breaking vote if need be. Members of Erie DSA and Erie County United have been talking for months about what to do about this problem we saw on the horizon. No easy solution exists, save for using as much influence as we could to try and sway members of council to support former Councilwoman Susanna Faulkner for another appointment. We have known that getting Susanna back in council is a hard ask, especially as the powers that be have plotted for months to ensure that Jasmine, Tyler, and Chuck can't have her on council to keep pushing forward progressive legislation. Hilariously, the conservative wing of council couldn't even come up with some new blood in order to hide their goals. They sincerely believe if they just push Mel back into power, the residents of Erie will have to accept things. It's outrageous that too many in City Hall have such contempt for our community, but it's not surprising. The ideology that permeates part of council and the mayor's office is neoliberalism personified. It's an ideology that demands government get out of the way as much as possible so that private interests can flourish. We see it in everything from the way that Lurda, the Lurda ordinance was passed to make sure, to make sure the power of Erie's criz stayed in the hands of the mayor and our state senator because Erie Insurance demanded it. And even in how last year's renter protection program only passed after those powerful landlords in the city were satisfied their finances wouldn't be too affected. So here we are. A wannabe kingmaker tries to usurp a democratic process so that he can get his term-limited power back on council and so that the two of them can attempt to dictate the direction of the city for years to come. That's shameful, and everyone in this room and in this city should be absolutely outraged that these backroom politics are still viable in 2024. Erie DSA and Erie County United fight for a positive vision in our community, and we have some solid successes. Multiple members of city council sit or have sat on this dais because our electoral field teams grind. It was we that helped push for Erie to become a sanctuary city for the LGBTQIA community. We helped fight for better protections for tenants. We helped put $9,000 in the pocket of UE 506 when they were on strike last summer. We have been at the forefront of the ongoing fight against the county executive's overreach with regards to the public library, its partial privatization, and its mistreatment of unionized employees. And it's our people putting on rallies in Erie to speak out against the genocide going on in Gaza in hopes that a ceasefire is reached. I bring this up because city council and the mayor needs to know that regardless of what happens today, our organizations will never stop fighting for the working class of Erie. A change is coming to this city whether some of you like it or not. Reject this resolution, use a fair process, and pick someone who will help push Erie in a progressive direction. Thank you.
How you doing? I'm Roosevelt Benjamin. I have a nonprofit organization, Men of the Community. I am a citizen of the city. I am a person who believes in the city at every level. I also believe that people who work for the community should be sitting up there. Like he said, like, like they said about, uh, people with all the backgrounds, they can sit up there and look good there. I know a person named Mel Witherspoon, who served 33 years in the community and 20 years at City Hall, who made a big difference in my life, a lot of my friends' life, and a lot of these people in the City of Erie. Every call, every call is landed by Mel Witherspoon. If you ever sat next to Mel and you see how many numbers he has in his phone, it's ridiculous. If you ever sat there and sat next to him in any event, and he's at every event that's given by anybody, and I haven't seen, uh, probably maybe about two of you guys at events in the City of Erie. We're not allowed to say the two, but we know who the two are. So with that being said, Mel answers every call, no matter what he's doing, what he's, or, or, or whatever the situation is. We talk about, okay, I fit this role. I don't fit this role. How about the people putting work in, like Mr. Bibbs said? Put work in the community. Don't show up when it's time for a vote. Be there when stuff is happening. I've been a part of Mel Witherspoon's Summer League for about 33 years, either playing or volunteering. You don't know the thrill that I had when I started playing at seven years old at Mel Witherspoon's Summer League. Most of us growing up in those areas, we didn't have a father figure. Mayor, we didn't have a father figure. He's bigger than life to us in our community. He's a father figure to all of us, all of us. And that's who we need, people who put work in up here, not the people to sit up here and just wanna be a part of something or looks like a part of something. Put the work in, tirelessly. He can call on anybody in the City of Erie to come and help him. At one blink of an eye, he can make a call, and everybody's gonna help this guy. Everybody, because he helps everybody. That's who we need up there. I, I'm not, I'm not big into politics, don't know too much about it, but put somebody up there that's gonna help our community, period. Whether he's Republican, Democrat, I don't even know what it is. Put the people who's gonna work for us. I've been a part of Erie, uh, the Erie's, uh, for Erie forever. You guys up there on the board or the council, you guys are in support of Mel Witherspoon, who's been running a free organization for 33 years. I came down here last year and said the same thing. One person came, and he was there for five minutes, and you know who you are. One person. That was after I spoke the week before. We don't have to say no names, do we? That's what I mean. Support people who's making a difference. It's 500 youth up there. 500 youth is up there playing. Spoon is out there every day, playing basketball, dribbling around, counseling kids, getting them out the streets, trying his best to get them out the streets. That's what city council people do. You guys have a free invitation to come up there anytime y'all want to and help these kids. And you don't wanna come. That's work. Y'all got, you guys tell me where there's a situation where you guys are doing that, I'm gonna show up and I'm gonna help the youth. Mel Witherspoon gave y'all the opportunity to come and do that and help, whether y'all get votes or not. Come up there and just be a part of. About 500 kids, all of Erie School District. Y'all need to realize what y'all doing. And it's not gonna help us in City of Erie.
Uh, my name's Dave Forrest. I'm an Erie resident.
Speaking, Mike.
Thank you. My name's Dave Forrest. I'm an Erie resident. And I don't think this issue is about individuals. It's not about Susanna. It's not about Mel Witherspoon. It's not about how old you are. It's not how long you've lived in Erie. This is about a process, in my opinion. There was a process at the outset to select a new councilman or councilperson to occupy a two-year seat. And that process should be followed. There's, you know, when you're grade school kids, we all learn that you don't change the rules of the game halfway between the game. You come up with the rules first, and you follow through on the rules of the game. And that's what I'm asking you to do. Thank you.
My name is, uh, Minister Lauren Cooley. I'm gonna change the pace, but I wish it was all black candidates up there because the black folks are being hit in the head. My topic is the blightin' program. Black folks are being hit in the head, and it don't seem like y'all really are concerned with it. Now, I wanna discuss residential blight and industrial blight. Now, those two topics should ring a bell in somebody's ear because there are three businesses that I wanna discuss today: Ironwork Square, the Union Square, and Avalon Hotel. Hundreds of millions of dollars have been poured into these three entities. Hundreds of millions of dollars. The residential blight, which mainly, the money's mainly spent on land bank properties, redevelopment properties, and the contractors, they use. And it's only 100, 1.8 million dollars. It's always a real low figure for residential, but a tremendous number for industrial. Now, it's over 900,000 citizens in this city, 900,000. And the, the, we only register as 14,000. The black folks only register as 14,000 people in this city. And yet, we're still being the only ones attacked. We can't afford your projects. We can't afford, every time you come knock on our door and tell us we need to fix the fascia, we need to fix the roof, we need to tackle the grass, you tear our house down. You tear our house down. You tear our house down. I'm finna get busy here. I watched the Redevelopment Authority meeting on December 11th, December 11th, with the Ironworker Square project. I watched a city official from the mayor's office securing a loan on a blighted property. The blighted property is the Old Malibu Building, okay? That property was purchased for $375,000. This shouldn't have been. According to the ordinance from the mayor's office, ordinance 49, 2009, Article 107.6, Transfer of Ownership, y'all know it well, y'all made the law. That ordinance stated that if a property is blighted, it cannot be sold. It cannot be sold. But this property was sold for $300,000. That ain't even the worst of it. The worst of it is, I watched the land bank director, the redevelopment authority director, and an agent from blight program secure the loans. This is just one person with all these titles. The director of land bank is the director of redevelopment authority is the agent for blight. How can we get any justice when we got all these obstacles in our way? How can the black folks get any justice? I wish all black folks was up there. Maybe we'd get some justice. As I stated, the land, the, the, uh, ironworker, the honorary part of this is a $5 million loan was granted to these people. They couldn't even, they didn't even have secure credit. That ain't even the top of it. The best part of it is, they received $23 million, I'm gonna make it fair, they received $23 million and it was all loans and grants. I know my time is up, but I just want to say this, and I'm finna, I'm finna close. I didn't want to be down here, and I'm trying not to be down here. You targeted me, I want the two members who targeted me disciplined and I'll leave you alone. But other than that, I'll be back.
My name is Bill Heath. I grew up in Erie, moved to California many years ago, and came back three years ago. As a successful businessman on the east and the west coast, still currently, I'm 75 years old, and I guess I'm an old man. I don't feel it. I'm out in the community all the time. I work with, I was in the Metro Football League, I wanted to get involved with kids when I moved back here because I had coached for over 40 years in San Diego. At a, at a low level in the inner city and at a high level at high school. So with, with that in mind, I wanted to give back to, to the community and the youth of the community. And once I got the, kind of the gist of what was going on in Erie and the lack of youth programs and safe places before and after school, Roosevelt Benjamin and I've been working with him and Men of the Community, and we are for the youth. If you remember, several of you were on council a few months ago when we brought the 10-year-old Jamal Smith here, Roosevelt and I stood in front of you and reached out to you the fact that this was a, this is a problem, a 10-year-old boy getting shot. And since that time, I've been working with Booker T. Washington Center, working, worked with the Spoon League. I'm, I'm involved. I'm just a, I'm a nobody as far as the only, Erie High, I go to their practices a couple of times a week, the football team, and I spoke to them because these kids need leadership. They need role models. They need people that care. And the number one role model in this city is right there. You can cut it any way you want. You can literally cut it any way you want. You can call him old, he has not had three consecutive terms, so let's cut that out and let's discuss his value to the community. His value to the community, go on the streets, go to the black community, go to the poor communities, east and west side, and you'll understand what's going on. It's not that complicated. It's not that complicated. What concerns me is, you know, with youth, there's ego. Sometimes that's warranted, sometimes it's dangerous. You can have your own agenda. I remember when I was 35, I made some mistakes in business. I would never make them at 50, I would not make them today. So without a mix of youth and age and, and experience and inexperience, you're going to get yourself in trouble. I'm telling you, you're going to get yourself in trouble because you don't know everything. And I don't, I don't say that disrespectfully because we have council people that have, have been many years already and coming back, and that is, that's a wonderful thing. But that mix, and especially when you're talking about an icon of the community, you can't, you can't, the comment was made regarding this wasn't a lifetime achievement award. That's, that's, that's just an embarrassment. I don't even know how to, how to respond to that, but we need to look at this for what it really is. And the gentleman, Reverend Cooley, that spoke before me, he's on the money. He's on the money. I've been blessed the last two years to meet a ton of people in the, in the, in the inner city Erie community, the movers and the shakers, the people that make things happen every day, after school, before school, talking to kids, being with kids, making sure they get home at night. This is, that's what, that's what happens. We reached out to you guys a few months ago and everybody, everybody's busy. I'm a busy guy. I'm a busy guy, so how do I find time to do that as an old white guy to help black And I have a successful business on the west coast. I, I could, I could walk around in my suit and in my nice office when I go out there and I got a nice office at home. That, that doesn't interest me. After a day or two, I'm, I'm driving myself crazy because I want to make a difference with these kids. I pray to God that you guys have an understanding and a desire and humility, truly humility, to understand what's going on and consider Mr. Mel Witherspoon.
Good morning. My name is Hayden Schroeder and I'm a resident of the Nango Township, which while not Erie is pretty much fully economically dependent upon the city of Erie. And I came here to say that we know for decades now, this city has been on the decline, its population has been dropping ever since all those economic reforms in the eighties occurred and the whole rust belt was destroyed. And among people who I know who have fled Erie, the general consensus I've gotten from them is it's usually because of the ennui and disinterest in this city and a lack of community. And I can also attest to that firsthand. I spent a year living in Washington DC and with all of the many problems that city has, one of them it does not is that there are people who are politically engaged and willing to do things around the community. And it's something that I really worry about here with the idea that city council might just ignore any kind of democratic process and put someone in who has had an already very long term. As an anarchist, I also just don't like personality cults and think everyone should be politically engaged, and I think this would very much lead to a lack of political engagement. And perhaps that's what some in city council who should be criminally investigated would like, that they would like people to not be interested so they can just rule over in necropolis. And with that, I cede the rest of my time.
My name is Colin Russ. I am a resident of the city of Erie, living on West 6th Street. Good morning, members of Erie City Council. I stand before you today to address the matter of filling the current vacancy on our council. For the second time in a year, circumstances have placed a task of tremendous importance in front of you. Filling the vacancy not only impacts Erie community today, but also set a precedent for the future governance of our city. That is why efforts by some members of council to quickly and quietly make this appointment is so troubling. Term limits exist for a reason. They are designed to ensure our community benefits from fresh perspectives and avoids complacency that blurs the lines of independence between council and the executive office. Term limits embody a promise to our citizens, a promise of a government that rejuvenates itself, that remains dynamic and responsive to the changing needs of the Erie community. More than a dozen individuals submitted their names and expressed a willingness to serve their community at a time when politics are divisive and polarizing. These individuals remain committed to serving their community and are a testament to the civic spirit of Erie. These individuals have stepped forward, ready to offer their skills and perspective, ready to face the scrutiny and vetting that comes from public service and transparent governance. By ignoring these individuals, by starting the process you successfully last year and previous years, by attempting to circumvent term limits, you undermine the trust that constituents place in this body and the processes that govern our elections. Relying on ambiguity in gray areas within the legal framework may prevent you from violating letter of the law, but it does not shield you from violating the very spirit of the law. Article 142 of the city code is more explicit and prevents individuals who have reached term limits from being appointed to authorities and commissions overseen by the city council. If such limitations are necessary for boards and commissions you oversee, then it stands to reason that the city council, the elected body that represents the will and welfare of our citizens, should adhere to an equal or higher standard. Today, the public demands greater transparency, a better understanding of the reasons behind these decisions and the processes, processes involved. Such openness is crucial for maintaining accountability, sustaining trust in public bodies, and ensuring fair practices. Transparency is not merely vital for upholding the integrity of our institutions, it also plays a significant role in promoting effective governance. In the spirit of democracy, transparency, and fairness, I urge the council to consider the broader implications that these efforts to circumvent an open process may have. Honor the principles of our city's governance, the voices of the Erie community, and the potential of new leadership that reflects the opportunities that exist in Erie. To overtly disregard term limits in light of the alternative is to choose the comfort of the familiar over the promise of the new, is prioritize continuity over opportunity, is an insult to the individuals who came forward in hopes of serving their community and the betrayal of citizens who placed their faith in you to demonstrate the highest levels of morality and character by voting for you. I stand here today asking the council to uphold the tenets of our democratic process by following the spirit of the law and upholding it as it was intended, and to consider the candidates who have come forward using a fair and transparent process. Let this decision be a reflection of our collective commitment to fostering and creating the Erie we want for our families, our friends, and neighbors, to continuously improve, to build on the progress we have made, not to rest on our laurels and hold this body to the highest standards, not the easiest.
Greetings, council. My name is Daylon Hooks. I'm a resident of the east side of Erie. I also run an organization that services some of the most vulnerable populations here in Erie County. Some of the most uninsured, housing unstable, vulnerable populations, we deal with public health and I get to talk to a lot of people around the city about their opinions and how they feel and deal with a lot of their issues in real time, help them, you know, with a lot of the barriers that they have to healthcare and housing in Erie County. I think that this group of council folk is, is a really good group that we have here today. Congratulations as well, Dr. Tylos, congratulations. I think that I'm here today to challenge the integrity of you all here. I think that a lot of youth, a lot of young folks are at a place with politics in general where they're kind of giving up their faith on decisions that are being made, not just local politics, but every area of politics. And I think that we need to start making decisions. Some of you I've had conversations with, some of you I've had personal relationships with, and I know a lot of your hearts are with the, you know, the community of Erie. But we can do better. A lot of you can present yourselves in spaces where it's needed, more spaces where it's needed. We've had conversations, I've been in your office. I think that the decisions that you guys make today, that you all make today, are very important and I think that your integrity is on the line. I think that we need to respect process. I think that we need to allow people the, the fair process that they deserve. I think that we need to look at applicants and make a decision based off of what is being presented before us. I think that we need to show the integrity that I know you all have and make that plain and blatant for people to see. A lot of people are looking to see what's about to happen. So I think that we all need to make a really good move on moral and integrity today, and I thank you for your time.
Good morning. My name is Logan Wurst, resident of the city of Erie. And as someone who applied for the city council opening and obviously a resident for half my life, albeit a very short life, I was a little bit dumbfounded to say when I heard the resolution to appoint former councilman Witherspoon to the open seat. Not to say I do not appreciate all that Mr. Witherspoon has done for this community. We've never met in person, but I recognize you from the Gannon Hall of Fame. I'm a current Gannon student and I'm honored to share the legacy of Gannon University alongside a man like you. But his eligibility is up. It even says in the city code that council members shall be eligible to succeed themselves for only two additional terms. To appoint him would be like a college athlete playing all five years of their eligibility and then the NCAA saying, hey, we liked you so much, you had such good experience that we want to bring you back for a six. That's just not allowed. It can't happen. So why would the city council ever put forth an idea? It's not democratic. Nothing about that ever says democracy. In passing a resolution would be a disservice to not only the people of the city of Erie, but to our democratic processes. You are no longer giving the other dozen of applicants who applied a fair chance at earning a spot. Instead, you're giving it away to someone who is no longer eligible. And I ask you again, how is that ever democratic? But if this resolution passes, it will undermine the authority of this council and their ability to hold themselves accountable. And power held unaccountable will inevitably become corrupt. So I urge you, do not pass this resolution. Go through the interviews, go through the process to properly appoint someone to this position who can best represent, best represent and serve the people of Erie. Thank you for your time today.
Hello, everybody. My name's Brandon Penn and I'm a resident of 532 West 8th Street in the city of Erie. I'm here today to resonate pretty much what everybody else has said so far. I actually put my name in as an applicant when I saw that you guys were looking to fill a seat. I was a little late to the party to be able to be put on a ballot for the traditional voting, but I felt that I had quite a bit to contribute to the council. Now, I don't know Mr. Witherspoon myself, and he very well may be the perfect person to fill this vacant spot, but what I'm here to ask is that you go through the normal process of interviewing everybody because how do you know if he's the best candidate if you haven't interviewed all the other people applying? You know, it's kind of curious to me why you would even have put out the, the application process if you already knew who you wanted to appoint in the first place. I understand this is an important seat that needs to be filled. I understand this is an important seat that needs to be filled, and if there weren't 13 of us also trying to be in here, I would definitely understand trying to appoint someone as soon as possible. But there are 13 of us. I think term limits are very important, and they should be throughout all of government, local to national. There is a generation of us that are looking to get involved in the world around us and try to make things better for us. I have family members, you know, my parents are in their late 60s. They don't, their life was totally different than our lives. You know, I'm a millennial, however you feel about millennials or not, we do have a different life. I mean, you know, we went through 9/11, which changed everything. We've gone through COVID, which changed everything. Growing up and building a family now is totally different than, you know, when our parents were growing up. And we need different policies to help move this city forward. For the longest time, I was a little ashamed to be part of Erie, you know, the mistake on the lake, right? So there was so much negativity around this city, but in the last five years, I've seen huge strides in progress, and I think we're on the right direction, and we need to continue in that direction. Again, I don't know if Mr. Witherspoon is the perfect candidate to move that forward. I understand he has a lot of involvement in the community, which is to be applauded. But my ask is that you guys go through the normal process, give everybody their chance to interview, and then pick the best candidate for that. Thank you, that's all I had to say.
Thank you.
What's up, everybody? My name is Savannah Wilson. I am 23 years old, which is literally Mel's full term here on city council. The problem nationwide with authority and local positions is boomers are refusing to give up their seats.
Can you please give your residency?
My name is Savannah Wilson. I was born in Erie, Pennsylvania, been here for 23 years.
You don't have to yell, sweetheart. You can calm down a little bit.
I'm fine. I'm good. Congratulations. I hope you do what you need to do in that seat, Ms. Jasmine. Like I was saying, boomers are the problem because they're refusing to give up their seat, stuck to their chairs like glue underneath a freaking desk. This is wild to me. I don't want to have to scrape you out of these seats when you're 92 years old. I'm not doing it. 20 to 40 years to bring up young, successful adults to take over for you guys? And this room should be filled with eager people that are willing to step up. Where are they at? Where are they at? There's nobody in here. Why am I the first woman to be up here right now to speak? Young woman at that, young woman of color. Where y'all at? Nowhere. It's greed and it's lust for power that brings this council together. When I put myself in my old elder shoes, I don't understand why I'm such a crippling age, why I want to be making decisions for other people that I'm not even going to be alive to see. It generally cracks me up that y'all can't even navigate the latest iPhone, have your fonts on a thousand to be able to save your text messages, and we're living in a world where AI is on the rise and it's coming for us. It's coming for us. You guys don't even know how to navigate your phones, you think you can navigate AI? It's taking over. It's here. Wake up. We need real decisions and real actions right now, because that world outside of Erie is growing way faster than Erie. Erie is 50 years behind, and so is our city council. What's up with that? What's up with that? We're not going back to the 1960s. We're not going back to the house era where women are going to be in the house. We're not doing that. We're at Burger King's 50 cents, our houses were $15,000. That's not the case anymore. I understand the need for radical change in this city. I understand that it's important that we're educating and motivating our youth to be involved with just more than basketball. We need black leaders in here. We need black people to stand up and take action and vote. Half of our black people are not registered to vote in this city. I work with the youth, I work in the Franklin Terrace. I'm out there every single day, and I'm looking at these kids, and I'm seeing there is no hope for them. They have no hope. Nobody's educating them. There's a disconnect between the parents and the students, because everybody's too worried about ego. They want to say young people have ego, these old heads have ego too. Y'all taking up our space. You're in the bars, you're on city council, you're in our schools. Move over. Train us. Motivate us. You're putting us down, down, so down. We don't want to get up anymore. We're tired. I know 23-year-olds that all they do is party, smoke, drink, this and that, and the third, but we have young people out there that have the talent, that have the patience, that want to be in here in these spaces, but they feel like their voices don't matter. That ain't right. That ain't right. And everybody's trying to act like, oh, it's not a big deal, let's go through this, let's do this, let's do things the old way. The old way is not working, guys. It's out of date. We're in the age of Aquarius. It's time to step up and realize that technology is really taking over. These school systems, everything is, it needs to change. It needs to go. It needs to go, because it's making our lives harder collectively. We're not training the people coming up from underneath us, we're putting them down. We're trying to be neck to neck when we should be working together. We shouldn't be against each other. We should be uplifting each other. Y'all should be taking people like me underneath your wing and being like, come here, let me show you how to run game so you don't make a mistake, so you don't mess up. What's up with that? Again, my name is Savannah Wilson, and things are about to change. 2025, I'm going to be a problem, and remember that, because every good way, I'm going to fight the good fight, and I'm going to keep speaking my truth even if my voice shakes. I don't care if people don't like me. I don't care about my reputation, because at the end of the day, justice will be served. It's time to wake up and realize we're not against each other. We're supposed to be working with each other in this city for our youth, because our kids are lovely kids, they're amazing kids, they're talented kids, but they're traumatized, they're hurt, they're raising their parents. They're raising their parents, and that ain't right.
Good morning. My name's Karen Adams, and I'm a resident of Erie. I was here 11 months ago on an issue of transparency also, and that's basically what I have to say today. First of all, welcome to Tyler Titus and to Mrs. Schaaf, Mary Schaaf. Thank you, Mayor Schember, for your words this morning on NPR. I just wish you had mentioned USCRI and Catholic Refugee Resettlement, just so people would know that we're valid here, and we're not accepting immigrants or illegal aliens or whatever you want to call them from other cities who don't want them. But thank you for everything you've done also. Again, it's back to transparency. What has happened here was not transparent. Again, last year, we were fighting city hall. This year, we're fighting council for the transparency issue. And most of what has been said already by the people who have preceded me, I am in full agreement with. So please consider the transparency. Please consider that you have 13 candidates, one of whom, two of whom, if you count Mr. Witherspoon, two of whom are very much in tune with council because they have served, and they have served well. Three, okay, three of whom. So, and I've known Mr. Witherspoon for 40 years, since I moved to Erie and became a PIAA basketball ref, and he is an icon in this city. He is someone whom we need to emulate and honor every single day for his service and his love for all people. However, the issue is not his continued service on council. The issue is whether this policy and procedure is the correct democratic one that is in the bylaws and that needs to be honored. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Paige Bosniak. I'm a resident of the city of Erie. I'll make it quick today because I have to be quick. I have an hour break in my workday that I was able to slink down here to ask you to oppose the resolution that was introduced by Mr. Brzezinski to appoint Mr. Witherspoon to the two-year seat. I think this violates, as others have said, the spirit of the law when it comes to term limits. I also just have questions about why this resolution was even introduced when there was a process that was already in place. I also think, again, I have to rush down here, that this was a big decision to put on the agenda for a 9:00 AM meeting at the start of the new year, when so many people, especially young folks or working folks, are, you know, at work. So thank you for your time. I again, hope everyone opposes this resolution, and we follow the process that has been already set and established and followed by many members of this council already in years past. Thank you, and have a good day.
Hey, council. Gabe Genoa, resident of Erie. I'm here to talk about the appointment of Mel Witherspoon. There is no doubt that Mr. Witherspoon is a phenomenal man who has done wonderful things for the city of Erie. He's a role model, and he's a strong person in Erie. To reiterate what many of the people before me here today have said, there is a democratic process to be followed. If the process is not followed by everybody, then what is it here for? To not follow the process is admitting that once elected, the voice of the people no longer matters. It tells voters that once elected, once an elected official is in, we don't have any say in politics. I'm here today speaking as a younger voter. You've got two loud-mouthed Gen Z-ers up here speaking today, and we are coming back, and we are not backing down. And with the two of us starting, we're going to start swarming in, because you know dang well that we are loud, and we will let you all know what we have to say. That being said, the younger generation is looking, we are watching, we are listening, we are being voted in, and we are voting ourselves. Younger people have applied for this position and have put in the work and are being told by this appointment that their work does not matter, because the council will undermine that work by electing someone who has run out their term. Many of you say you exist here today to serve the community, that the residents of Erie are your top priority. The appointment of a councilman who has served 20 years and already had a retirement party is an action that says power is your motive and not your community. I strongly encourage the council to reassess the appointment presented today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Keys, Erie, Pennsylvania. I'd like to address a couple of things. First, the issue of term limits. You know, ordinance is written, council passes an ordinance, and then it becomes the law of our city. And the term limit is three, is three consecutive terms. And once a person reaches that, that would make them ineligible to be selected for council. And so there's a few things that, you know, people haven't, you know, been quite correct on about like the process. The process is whatever technically four council member agrees on. And there is no official process for appointing a person. And to quote our solicitor, it said that any person in Erie over the age of 18 who's qualified can be appointed. And so while that is true, we also have to look at what's written in the other book, because then we would say that, okay, can we appoint a felon? Can we appoint a person who's otherwise barred by another section of our laws? Those are things that we need to look at. I think we're, it's being made too, too simple when there's always two, two pieces to something like that. It's not as simple as it is read. And so there's good news and bad news there. The ordinance isn't well-written, and so I recommend that regardless of what happens today, that the ordinance be repealed and replaced so that there are no more gray areas, so that there are no more places for maneuvering paths which would be considered the normal term limits. And so that would be my first task that I would put on council to, if we are not going to abide by it, repeal and replace it and tighten up the language so that we don't have this problem again. The second, if you heard one of the persons earlier talking about the redevelopment authority, the land bank, and the city building code inspectors. These are real problems that we need real solutions to, and recently, the city redevelopment authority was poised to loan the county redevelopment authority $5 million of the money that we gave them. When I say we, that was as a council, when I was sitting on council, to help mitigate blight and to help people fix their houses and for other housing programs. And it's, it's a tragedy, and it's an injustice to the people. And so I also want the people who remain to be vigilant for our people's rights, our residents' rights, our property rights, and we have to stand up to these organizations who are pretty much taking the generational wealth out of the inner city and converting it to other people, organizations, agencies, and non-residents. And so those are the things that are important beyond what goes on today. What's important is people have to have a place to live, we need to fix our city, and it's about, I hate to say it, it's about money. I sat there and had $76 million go through my hands, and the people have nothing. Ask yourself what's on the ground now that wasn't on the ground three years ago when we got $76 million of unanticipated funding. That's for the people. And I think that we, and as a community, we should keep that in mind, that if you're not for the community, if you're not putting the money into the community and into our communities, then that's a problem. It is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Art Leopold. I live in Millcrick, but I've been in Erie most of my life. Happy New Year, administration, Mayor Joe. Happy New Year to the esteemed council. I certainly appreciate all you do, each and every one of you. Madam President, congratulations. Madam Vice President, congratulations. And to our new member, Mr. Tyler. I want to thank you all for serving. I appreciate what you do. On the matter of the resolution, you will never get me to speak ill of Mr. Spoon. He's a friend, longtime friend and a brother, and I appreciate everything he does. I want to talk to you something that's higher than this resolution, and that's the civility, the unity, and the harmony of this body. That's about most important to me, because you have a lot of work to do, and you need to do it arm in arm. And I would suggest to Mel, like my friend Cindy suggested, perhaps he ought to consider, even if he's chosen through the resolution not to serve that way. Why? Because he is an applicant in the other process, and he can go through that process, and out of the clash of opinions, often, truth is found. And so if he rises through that process of the 13, be chosen as the best option, so be it, and God bless. But I think it's important for the civility and the unity and the harmony of this body, that that process be open, democratic, and be free from any politicization. I think certainly in any book, anything that Mel tries, he always rises to the top. So I would suggest sincerely that you consider as a council, that he considers an individual, to let the process play through, and not consider the process, but really the unity of this body, because that's greater than the process. Because that's greater than the process, in my book. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Art.
Yes, my name is John Mayor Jackson. I'm 1914 June Street, Erie, PA. I was told that it's too late for a special election. The only thing I'm saying is that, I don't know how it could be corrected, but you see what my hat says? Voters decide. I don't care if it's a two-year term, four-year term, the voters should be the ones to decide. Not city council, not the mayor, the voters.
Do we have anyone else who would like to speak?
I live in Erie County. I'm a candidate to fill the two-year seat through appointment. Michael Keys hit it on the head. There is no process. I have no idea what the process is. I've gone through three situations where appointments had to be made, and each time it was a different process. Every council person had the opportunity to put on a resolution for the person they wanted. Could've put two on there, but you didn't. And if there is a process, it was created within the last day or two. And as a candidate, no one has called me, sent me an email or text saying, "Mel, this is the process." The process can be tainted. Depends on who writes the process. I suggest to all council, be involved. Be involved on whatever process you have. I spent eight years in state government. I spent 22 years in corporate America in charge of 14 counties in northwest, northern, western Pennsylvania. I handled $32 million that I had to give to those 14 counties, and I didn't have to ask anybody, "Should I give this or that?" I received a few phone calls. They said, "Mel, I looked at all the resumes. None compared to you." I have council folks saying I'm too old. I have... But what they don't know, you better look at my history. I ain't too old for nothing. My mind is young, my mind is sharp. You know why? Maybe one or two of you could walk through the hood at 12:00 midnight. Have any of you, when the games was acting up, did you go meet with the Crips? Did you go meet with the Bloods? No. Unbeknownst to you, there was a couple of situations that my presence and what I told them settled them down at least those two times. They respect me as a council person and they figure I could do something. And I work with the police department very closely. No, I am not. If I'm selected, you don't know me. When I go to fight, I don't quit. I don't quit. So if you, if you make the right decision and select me through the process, whatever, I'm gonna be here and I'm gonna fight for the people. It took 13,000 people to put me up there. As I told you, 20, 20 years. And now you say, "Spoon, you're too old." No. Then one of the candidates you put on there that Ed and I are acting like the mafia. So it took me about half an hour to figure how I'm old dressed today. I'm gonna follow the rules. I heard the bell. If the flower shop was open, I would've had a carnation and I probably would've got an empty violin case. Thank you very much and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that all the citizens who would like to be heard today? Are there any other citizens who would like to be heard today? If there are no more citizens to be heard, we will move on.
Ordinances for final passage. Council File Number 16412, introduced by Council Member Brzezinski. Official Ordinance 1/2024. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $25,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue from a donation for winter maintenance from Work in Progress LLC and providing for the expenditure thereof. Sponsored by Member Brzezinski, seconded by Member Troop. The Council File Ordinance, Bill Number 164112, and now known as Official File Ordinance 1/2024, be finally passed by City Council. Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, and Flores. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 1/2024 by yeas six, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council File Number 16413. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $15,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. This is a contribution from the Mercy Terrace Apartments for use by the Bureau of Police, Fire, and Streets. Sponsored by Council Members Brzezinski and seconded by Council Member Troop. The Council File Ordinance Number 16413 haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Member Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Flores. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16413 by yeas six, nay zero on first reading. Council President, this takes us to new business.
Do I have a motion in a second to move the balance of the agenda?
Actually, I gotta do old business first.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Pursuant to the recommendations from the City Planning Commission in a public hearing held on Wednesday, December 20, 2023, at approximately 8:00 PM in City Council chambers, a request for waterfront conditional use submitted by homeowner Del Birch for construction of a one-story rear addition to an existing two-family dwelling located at 314-316 East Second Street, parcel ID 141052140, be hereby approved. Council Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, and Flores. Old business is concluded.
Okay. Can I have a council member motion in second to move the balance?
Motion, move the balance. Second.
Okay, thank you. Any separations?
Number one.
Number one.
Any other separations?
Can I separate number three, please?
Any others? If there's no more separations, moving the balance of the agenda, Council Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, and President Flores. We have resolutions sponsored by Council Member Brzezinski, seconded by Council Member Troop. Be it further resolved that City Council vote on Mel Witherspoon for the appointment to the two-year council seat with the knowledge that Mel Witherspoon is able to be appointed after his term ended and contribute with his many years of experience on City Council. Discussion?
Madam President? By me?
Go ahead.
I'm not as eloquent as my good friend Mel. I come across kind of gruff at times, but one thing you know about me is that I never lie to you people. Transparency is what we did with this. When we found out from the solicitor that it was a possibility that Mr. Spoon could be appointed for a two-year term, we talked about it. We also talked to the rest of council and we mentioned, you know, there could be a dozen people out there. Nobody, I mean nobody, will hold a candle to that old man there. You saw how old he was. He'd still kick my butt. But I'm telling you, I had a hard time. I was, I'm the guy that mentioned lug nut. You know what? If you look in a Brzezinski dictionary, what a lug nut is? It's a person who thinks they're right because they haven't found out the facts. That's all a lug nut is, in case you wanted. The fact is, we have a great man who wanted to continue helping our city. Fact two, we have four people sitting here who gave their word to Mr. Witherspoon. That nobody else was better and they had his vote today. Look at the general public, people, because if your word means nothing to you, then it means nothing to the city. Thank you.
Madam President, if I could? Thank you. First of all, before I have what I want to say, I would request that Mr. Betza explain the way you so eloquently did in caucus, if you don't mind.
I'm not sure anything I did was eloquent, but the way I approach this is, first of all, do we have a vacancy? And when did it occur? So there were two seats that were both, there were four open seats that were all filled by the voters. Two of them were filled by the same individual, in this case, Mr. Brzezinski. The vacancy occurs when Mr. Brzezinski accepts the position. He accepted the four-year position. That makes the two-year position vacant as of today. Under the statute, the city has, or City Council has 30 days to fill that vacancy. And the statute provides that City Council shall fill that vacancy. That's not an option, that's a must. If, in the event of, if you do not fill that vacancy in 30 days, then that decision goes to the Court of Common Pleas. There's one twist to it, and that is if there is a tie, the mayor has the power and may break the tie. He's not required to do so, that's an option. So what, what could happen here is we could have a number of different scenarios, but I would ask that you do your best not to leave it to the mayor, not to leave it to the Court of Common Pleas, but to make a decision regarding filling that seat today. That is your job and you shall fill it. Now if you can't, we have a Plan B and even a Plan C to do that, but that is your job. There's been a couple of questions regarding, is Mr. Witherspoon eligible to serve? And we've talked about term limits. The term limit provision that we're talking about is contained in our city's ordinance. So City Council passed a rule that said you can have three consecutive terms, in essence. That's 12 years. But that rule about, so Mr. Witherspoon was not eligible to run for reelection because he has 12 years. Once there's a break in service, he would be eligible to be reappointed. Mr. Witherspoon could also run for future offices and be elected for three more consecutive terms. We don't have a term limit. There's no federal rule, there's no state rule. It is our local rule that we say you can serve three consecutive terms. We've already had six or seven votes today. Mr. Witherspoon did not participate in those votes. He's not a council member. There is a break in service. He could be appointed. I'm not here to advocate for him He could be appointed. We've also heard discussion about a process. Unfortunately, we don't have a, a formal process. Process that's identified by state law, that you, as a member of six, decide who the seventh person is. We've done it different ways. We've had interviews. We've had different ways that we vote. None of them are wrong. Whatever the six of you decide is the way we will play the game, in essence, and the way we will fill that seat. So I, I don't know if there's any other questions, but that's, that's the gist of it.
Thank you. So, Madam President, if I could have my say then?
You wanna, are you continuing with comment or is other comment gonna be?
So, I'm going to continue to speak after him because I wanted him to speak first. Okay, so, you have voted Erie. A person who wears her heart on her sleeve and is pretty simple-minded, I hate to say. And I consider everyone to be a part of a family, like, you know, we're all, you elected me, I'm a person of faith, and we're all God's family, right? So, that's me. That's my opinion. I'm not preaching it, I'm just saying, this is who I am, okay? So, being open to people and, you know, walking around thinking we're God's family. Like, my family disagrees with some of the things I do because I'm not afraid. So, my car yesterday passed inspection after four tries because it's 20 years old and falling apart. And I was so thankful because that's my ride. That's my ride to bring people to doctor's appointments who can't do it. I drive people I don't even know sometimes and I know, you know, I, you know, but it happens and that's what I do. So, one of the blessings- So, one of the blessings that happened to me yesterday was, yes, my ride, I can still drive people to where they want to go. I don't know, I guess I'm rambling, but I have been driving Mel when we were on council together, and I would drive him home. And I got to know him. And he is what I would say the grandfather of my family. I love intergenerational families. My friend Mo and Teresa Valario, who no longer live in Erie, who live in Texas, they have Mo's mother living with them. And my friend Patty had her mother living with them. Because intergenerational families get it. They usually aren't abusing their grandparents. And I think that's what's lacking sometimes in our city, in our world, perhaps. I think the Japanese have more respect for the elders than some other communities do. But intergenerational families get the give and take and listen to the wisdom of their parents and grandparents. And also, the grandparents learn from the kids. I'm still teaching kindergarten through eighth grade art, forty years, I mean, it hasn't been the whole thing, but anyways. So I get, I learn from kids. I love being a grandparent. I absolutely love being a grandparent because I learn from them. And it's one of the reasons why I didn't want to completely give up teaching. But again, going to another point, I'm sorry I'm rambling. So, I've gotten to know Mel. Personally, I trust him. And I can't say I trust everyone. But I really and truly trust him. And so, I did my research. I'm a Google person and I know, you know, I know what's going on right now. Should I bring it publicly up, what's going on? I don't know. But there's a lot of stuff going on, okay? My, so you, okay, let's get back to another thing. So you got me into office, okay? And I'm speaking my mind here. Some of my votes go with my head and some of my votes go with my heart. So when the viaduct was about to get pushed away, I voted with my heart and said, I don't want the viaduct going down. I know the east side. I lived there for four years, three blocks away when I was a little child, even though I don't, you know, quote, remember it, but I still love that community. And I also voted against the roundabout and the highway because that too was voted with my heart. Because when I lived on Fifth and Ash, I used to go and walk down to Dobbin's Landing because it was close by. And it was a pain, you know. So anyways, I just know how difficult it is that it's going to be when those roundabouts come in and how difficult the people are going to have who don't have transportation. Because I try to walk as much as I can. And I know that some things are harder when you're walking than when you're driving. I have been accused of getting a public restroom, maybe, or doing a backhand deal. So, I'm upfront with everything. So when I met with Tyler, Dr. Tyler Titus, and when I met with Jasmine and had coffee with them, I told them, my heart's with Mel. You know, it is what it is. I wanted to be upfront with them. I will honestly tell you, I have not read the cover letters. I have not, I saw the people's names, I know there are names, but I didn't like read every single one or anything. I just know there's names out there and I can't even, you know. But having gone through the process in council before, knowing that there is no process, I know that there are some personal biases. And I know things get skewed, having gone even through it myself. It is what it is. But my heart's for Mel, whether we go through a process or whether we, you know, do this. I'm just putting it out there, thank you.
Any other discussion among council members?
Madam President, so I don't, and this is the same that I said back in caucus, I don't believe that the resolution before us was created with malicious intent. I believe it was brought forward in the spirit of streamlining and keeping a sense of cohesion and wisdom on council. And I don't believe that it was created with the intention of sowing distrust or with the goal of usurping public process that's been followed for the last two appointments. Unfortunately, intent is not the same as reception. The reality is that this resolution is inadvertently ruling over a process that has been utilized, at least in the last two appointments, and is disregarding, I believe, a lot of transparency that we've kind of laid out and public comment that's come forward. Regardless of whose name is brought forward in the resolution, it could have been the person, I don't, it has nothing to do with the name that is on it. It's the resolution in that process in and of itself that is most unsettling to me. And I cannot, in good conscience, acting as a representative of the constituents who were, I feel silenced and by the applicants who've been sidelined for the resolution vote on it. I do think public service through elected office is an arduous task. We lose sleep, we take on responsibilities that often go overlooked and unnoticed. Very seldom, and I say this, being very privileged to sit in this seat and very humble to sit in this seat, that we don't go downtown without ever being stopped and having a discussion or, you know, people coming up to us. All that being said, what Mr. Witherspoon has done for this city and continues to do is gonna outlive all of us. His legacy is insurmountable. I did read every resume and every cover letter that came through, and I will say that the candidates who put their names forward are astounding. We have some exceptional people who have stepped up with experience that crosses a large breadth that I don't think have ever held a spot on council. And so I don't want to circumvent hearing what they could offer to this council while, at the same time, not dismissing everything Mr. Witherspoon has done. And it is respect for, you know, Ed and Mr. Troop, who put the resolution up and seconded it, that I say that I can't sponsor it. And it's just the process in and of itself and not the person you're putting forward.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Madam President, if I may. First of all, I'm gonna ask the solicitor, Kathy kind of took the questions I was gonna ask. But I want to ease my mother's mind, who I have to drive to work sometimes whenever Erie has snow, because she doesn't drive in the snow. So I have to go pick her up in the morning and take her to work and then go pick her up and take her home. So she asked me today, is that process legal? And, because I've seen people on the news saying that it was illegal. And I've had people where I work at ask me the same question. So can you, would you be able to answer that for us?
There's nothing illegal that I've heard. Just so we're clear, and I said this before, the six of you have the burden and the pleasure, but you have the obligation to fill that vacancy. And so, you could do it at any point when there is a vacancy. That vacancy started today. That vacancy ends in thirty days. If you don't fill it, either the mayor may, under certain circumstances, fill it, or the Court of Common Pleas, if you fail to fill it in thirty days, will do it for you. I'm urging you not to let that happen. But to fill it, whether you do it today or within the next thirty days, is up to you and however you do it is legal. Unless there's something that is nefarious that happens, but I have not heard that. Could you appoint somebody today? Yes. Could you appoint somebody at any point between now and thirty days? Yes. And it's your obligation to do so.
I mean, just two, a couple of comments. Since I've been involved with politics, I'm kind of appalled at the disrespect from younger people for people who are older. I mean, I can't believe how much I've seen that since I've been involved with politics. Like, people flat out saying, you're old, you're this, that. That's so disrespectful. And I wish, you know, I remember being in my twenties and my Uncle Larry, who was involved with a lot of politics and things like that. You know, I was a hothead in my twenties too, you know, and thought I knew everything. And he would be telling me stuff. And I would say, man, you don't know what you're talking about. You don't know what you're talking about. That ain't gonna happen to Mo Troop, I'm Mo Troop, you know. And then when I was standing in that situation that he actually told me about, like, standing in the mud that he told me I was gonna be in, I said, man, Uncle Larry knew what he was talking about. And I decided that I'm not gonna disagree with my uncle anymore because he knew what he was talking about. And so, also, you know, so, one of the luckiest things a young person can get in their life, you guys all know I play in a band, and my band has become very successful. And one of the reasons why it's successful is because there was older musicians who kind of took me under their wing. And whenever people called me and said, hey, Mo, we want your band to come play in Cleveland or do this, I called them and said, hey, this is what was presented to me, what do you think? Because they've been there before. And they give me honest advice because they care about me. Now also, I do respect, so I would say to younger people, quit disrespecting older people. That's our wisdom, that's our, you know what I mean? But we also gotta do respect to young, too. Because when I'm laying at home and I don't know how to work my TV.
Not that old yet.
Oh, sometimes I am.
Oh, no.
And when I don't know how to get the football game on, I do have to call my son and say, hey, can you get this going for me? So, you know what, there's the best of both worlds. We need everybody. Nobody has more value than anybody. But to me personally, the best thing that ever happened to me, the best thing that happened to somebody my age or younger, is that an older person will be willing to share what they have to give to you. I would tell you to open up and take it from them. Now, no matter if we use a process or not, we appoint by resolution. I've been involved with situations where there was a process. But guess what? Even in the process, the person was already decided. Even with fifty applicants, it was already known who was getting the job. So I mean, you know, I just hope that whatever we do is right and we do what's best. And as long as it's legal, I'm fine with it, but thank you very much.
Coffee vote?
You don't have any comments?
No.
No?
I would like to say a comment. I know that when I was gaining support for presidency, it had come down to the last individual who would be on council and that his vote of confidence was at the expense of voting in favor of this resolution. I had stated that we should make sure that we submit our application for the interview process because we want to be appointed, so we need to make sure that we're doing the proper steps that were in place the year prior that we had had a successful appointment done to council. Now, me stating that you should submit your application does not automatically mean that you can strong-arm an individual into making sure the vote happens. Now, it's kind of insulting when you have a conversation and they take face value of all the information that you're hearing and taking in at the conversation that this is the way it's going to be. I went to a meeting to hear all communication from all parties that were involved. And when I got the information that this resolution could be either put on at the last meeting or at the future meeting, I stated, please put in your application and resume if you would like to be appointed. I'm in favor of the process because that helps the community at ease, not feel as though we are cutting corners and making the process easier for some and not for others. So with that, I would like to say if there are no more comments
I have a comment.
To be stated.
I hope you keep on talking to, somehow in your mind, figure out that you're lying. I sat at the table.
Call for the order, please, call for the vote.
I sat at the table and you looked at Mr. Witherspoon and you said, you have my vote, Mr. Witherspoon. Alright, I don't care, you vote whichever way you want to. I just want the whole world to know, the next time you run, your word means nothing, Madam President. Thank you.
And I hope that when everyone is up for reelection, that we all make sure that we're putting our boots on the ground and reaching the voters so that they'll be more politically involved, thank you.
Madam President?
Call the vote.
You're new at this, but you could use the gavel when they pull stuff like that.
Okay, well, I'll try to remember that for next time. Please, Lloyd, call for the vote.
Voting on the resolution, council members Brzezinski.
Yes.
Nelson.
No.
Schaff.
Yes.
Titus.
No.
Troop.
Yes.
Flores.
No.
Resolution fails to pass by three to three tie. Going on to number three. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the City of Erie Mayor and City Council of Erie County hereby request a statewide local share assessment grant of $30,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for twenty Knox Key Secure six boxes. Be it further resolved that the applicant does hereby designate Lisa Gomersall, Director of Finance, Joe Schumberg, Mayor, as the officials to execute all documents and agreements between the City of Erie and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant. Discussion?
I had just requested that this be pulled out, just so I could better understand. I, I'm trying. I just requested this be pulled out so that I can better understand. Just being new, I wanted to make sure that if I was just gonna vote for an amendment to a budget or adding more money, that I understood what was being requested.
Is that all discussion that's needed?
So there was, for the Commonwealth Financing Authority Local Share Account Grants, we have to provide a City Council Resolution with the application. The applications were due November 30th. So an application went forward for these key secure boxes. When they received the application, there was a partial part of the grant that they could not fund, was for software. But they said if we wanted to apply for more of the boxes, we could do that. And that we needed to amend the resolution. And so that's what this is, just so that we're applying for more of the boxes, we're taking the software out. But we need to make sure that the amount of the request mirrors the application and the quote. So that's simply what this is.
Is that money being pulled from somewhere else?
No, this is to apply for a grant.
Got you, thank you.
With the Commonwealth Financing Authority.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Voting on the resolution, members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, and Flores. Resolution passes six to zero. Moving on to number four. A resolution that the proper city officials be, and they are hereby authorized to implement the fee schedule to complement State 71911B, Article 719 Streets and Sidewalks with regards to construction closures of sidewalks. That's our ordinance article number. Commercial sidewalk closer in the fee schedule is $100 per block, per week, per side. No fee for a covered walkway or alternate path. Residential sidewalk closure, $1 per lineal foot of work per week. Discussion?
Madam President, if I may.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I think, um, this one is actually overdue, so it's a good thing, um, that you have worked so hard to do that. I have also complained, um, about things like sidewalk closures and accessibility at the roundtable discussions held, um, by Mayor Joe's staff, um, Mr. Sala, and, um, that is a good organization that meets and talks about accessibility. Thank you.
Yeah, um, the sidewalk issue has been an issue that I heard in the community a lot while I was still a community organizer and activist, so I definitely wanted to make sure that something got done so that our dedicated citizen Fredo would be at ease that we're working in the right direction. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Voting on the resolution, council members Brazinski, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, and Flores. Resolution passes ye six na zero. Madam President, this takes us to committee reports.
Do you have volunteered to do committee reports or should we just start on the end?
I'll go first.
Okay, go for it.
Yeah, it's a weird schedule between the last meeting as president and one where you're not in presence. I've got no committee report.
Okay.
First time I think I've ever done that.
And you can go next.
No reports. Same reason.
Madam President, I have no report.
Madam President, um, I just wanted to address, um, if I could, uh, the comment about the sign and the headquarters. I guess, again, I speak differently, but I just think that right now, the Democratic Headquarters needs to try to have some perhaps better communication or something. I don't know exactly because, um, I consider myself like a moderate Democrat. I'm not conservative and I'm not liberal. I'm sort of like a person who sits and listens and then decides. I think Erie has done huge progress with the LGBTQ scale. What's, um, what's that called again?
MBI.
Pardon?
The MEI.
The MEI, thank you. So I, so Mel's mind is actually better than my mind because when I get nervous, sometimes I lose pieces, you know? So that's, that's who you got in office. But I've actually had this my whole life and not just, um, as an adult, you know, getting older, I've had this my whole life. But, um, so we're doing great strides and that's because Mayor Joe has got on board with a lot of progressive movements. And it was wonderful, this morning, Dr. Tyler, at caucus, how you calmed me down when you started talking about family because that's awesome. We are all here, brothers and sisters, as family and I had to resign from Human Relations Commission because I couldn't be on council and that has progressed and, um, Kelly Ryan is so awesome and amazing. Alex Spoon is so awesome and amazing and, um, I taught Alex in kindergarten, believe it or not. And, uh, so it was awesome to have him a part of all of that. Well, anyways, where am I going? Um, so I'm going to continue to advocate for the homeless. We definitely need public restrooms. We definitely need a place for them, uh, for all people to have shelter over their heads at night. And, um, Mr. Keys is, um, wanting to improve Roger Young Park. That park has my heart and all parks have my heart because I raised my family in the summer, going from park to park to park. You can talk to them about that. We had a club for 15 years called the SATS Club, Stay Active This Summer, and we chose every week to go to a different community park, whether it be in Erie City or Erie County or what have you. But parks have my heart too because you can do nothing in a park but watch birds and trees and squirrels and it's wonderful because I'm also a nature person. Um, and we need time in nature. I really believe nature refocuses us and gets us going. And, um, I also wanted to thank my niece, um, Julia, who's, uh, she's my niece and she has my heart and she supported me, um, today in a special way by, uh, taking off from school her senior year, um, to be here to, um, anyways, I don't know if I disappointed you or not, but thank you so much for, um, being here.
I hope not.
And, um, oh, so I'm a walker and I tripped, um, almost. I was walking by myself this week and Third and Chestnut area, that whole lower west side, the whole lower east side, I broke my hand, um, in March on the lower east side and I almost broke something on the lower west side. We have to do something with our sidewalks. Our sidewalks are definitely in need of repair. And right now, um, I'm going to ask the streets department when I see them. There are places like Lynn and Payne Avenue, I think, where they come together where the sewer is completely blocked by leaves. And so you, um, when it rains, if we're going to have a rainstorm, that's how flooding occurs because nothing can go down those sewers because right now it's all leaves. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Have a great day.
Tyler? Councilman Tyler?
I don't have any report to give back.
And since it is the last of the year, I don't have a report either. A lot of the meetings were either virtual or postponed to January, so Teresa? No report? New year.
No report from the solicitor in office.
I wish I could say the same.
I am not finished. And I know the people that know who I'm talking about.
Okay, we're still in conversation. Thank you.
We, we have a, uh, I just want to address the, the vote.
Okay, we're going to continue so we can wrap up the meeting. Mr. Councilman Troop has to get to his next job, please, and thank you.
So we have a three-three vote, which is a tie regarding filling a vacant council seat. I believe that under the statute, that triggers, um, a provision, which I'll read, "The mayor may attend meetings of council and may take part in discussions of council, but shall have no vote except in the case of a tie on the question of filling a vacancy in the council, in which case he may cast the deciding vote." So it would be my intent to get certification from the clerk at the end of the meeting of a three-three vote, present that to the mayor, and then the mayor will have a choice to make as to whether or not he wishes to break that tie.
Is there a time limit on that, solicitor?
There is not a time limit in the statute, um, but, um, certainly, uh, I, I think, just given the issue, it, it, time is, is, is of the urgent nature. I don't think that the mayor needs to make that decision right now. But I raise that with you, not because it's my desire to send that memo, it's that, it's my desire to say if there's any other motion by council, now is the time. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks. Just quickly, um, I just want to reiterate kind of what I said at the last council meeting. As we start the new year, we will be embarking on a lot of grant applications. Those of you who have been through the budget process, um, at least once realize how tight the general fund budget is and so, uh, we apply for a lot of grants all year long. So bear with us on that and hopefully we'll be, um, successful on a number of fronts. That extra funding, uh, in excess of $30 million sometimes in a year allows us to do a lot of extra things that we couldn't do just through, um, property taxes that are raised. We also have a number of really exciting initiatives that will be underway this year, including a comprehensive citywide Parks and Rec Plan, in which we'll be seeking input from residents, a 12th Street Reimagined Plan, a, a local climate action plan, uh, Safe Streets For All Plan and implementation, the East Bay Front Greenway Trail in partnership with the Redevelopment Authority of the city. So there's going to be a lot going on and we look forward to getting started. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
I'll be, probably quick as well. I certainly hope over the next 30 days, council can make a decision, uh, and I'll do everything I can to, to help you with that. Uh, I would suggest you start reviewing the 13 applications you received, decide who are the best people here that should be interviewed, interview them, and then, again, I'm really hoping the six of you can make a decision. Uh, and I'll, I'll stay open and I'll, I'll participate as much as you want me to as well. One last thing I wanted to-
Excuse me, you're saying you refuse to vote on this resolution?
No, no, I'm not saying that.
My thoughts, the solicitor said that you had the ability to make that vote.
He said, I, yeah, I have, still have that option, right.
And he's saying he wants council to come to a consensus.
I'd rather have you guys make the decision, not me, because it's your group. It's really your role and I'm not looking to force somebody in that you may not want or something like that. Okay? Uh, one last thing, uh, I got a new pen this year. As you can see, I've got, I've, I've got at least one of these for each of you and basically it's got my name on it and it says, "Let's not rest in 2024 until we bring thousands of new jobs and new people to Erie, Pennsylvania." So I'm, and happy to give everybody, uh, one of these pens as well. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe that takes us to the end of the meeting. City council meeting for January is done for the morning. Thank you.
City council adjourns at 11:47 a.m. Council President Flores, Brazinski, Nelson, Schaff, Troop, and Titus.